Counselor Hanley, just before we go live, just a heads up, I have you listed for the land acknowledgement, so I'll, I'll put it on the screen, okay, for you?
Yes, sir.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM and I'll call on Counselor Hanley to read the land acknowledge.
The city of Thorold is situated on treaty land. This land is steeped in the rich history of the First Nations such as the Hatawan drank, the Haranashi, and the Ananashabi, including the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation. There are many First Nations, Matisse, and Inuit people from across Thorold Island that live and work in Niagara today. The city of Thorold stands with all Indigenous people, past and present, in promoting the wise stewardship of the lands on which we live.
Thank you, Counselor Hanley. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, adoption of the agenda. I propose that the agenda be amended to allow for the following. Remove closed session item 16.2 regarding Mark Capriemi and planning. Add as a closed session item a matter respecting Kiefer Mansion. Can I get a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda as amended Counselor DeRose and Counselor Sentence? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Adoption of the minutes. Can I get a mover and a seconder to adopt the open and closed city council minutes from January 14th? I got Counselor Decker and Counselor O'Hare. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Mayor's report. On January 16th, we raised the Crime Stoppers of Niagara flag at City Hall. January is Crime Stoppers Awareness, was Crime Stoppers Awareness Month. Joining me were Counselor Sentence, Regional Counselor Whalen, city staff, and from Crime Stoppers Niagara, Mike Britton and Luke Jasavichis. This event demonstrated our community's commitment to public safety and supporting initiatives that encourage anonymous crime reporting. Our united efforts can make a significant impact in creating a safer and stronger Niagara. On January 17th, Menos Delaria and I attended the Algoma Central Corporation luncheon and Marine Club dinner held at the Fairmont Royal York Hotel in Toronto. We were joined by other Welland Canal Corridor mayors, Mayor Cisco Campion Steele and their staff representatives. On January 20th, CAO Menos Delaria and I visited Destiny Copper at their location in the Thorold multimodal hub. We met with CEO Greg Hanna and their staff to discuss their copper extraction operation and opportunities moving forward. On January 24th, I attended the MOU signing of Bethesda and Brock University at Bethesda headquarters on Schmon Parkway. Bethesda CEO Paul McGowan and Brock University President and Vice Chancellor Leslie Riggs signed the MOU. This partnership continues the work the two organizations have been doing for many years and includes working together on research initiatives, experiential education, and services for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Paul stated that one of the main reasons Bethesda chose their location on Schmon Parkway in Thorold was its proximity to Brock University. On January 26th, I was joined by Counselors Sentence and Decker at the puck drop ceremony for the 35th Annual Henderson's Pharmacy Hockey Tournament, held at the Doherty Arena prior to the U-11 championship game. Thorold Blackhawks teams captured three championships in the 33-team tournament. They were the U-18 Local League One, the U-13 Local League Two, and the U-11 Local League One teams that won championships. Thank you Tournament Director Bree Wilson, TAA Executive, and all the volunteers, teams, coaches, parents, spectators, and city staff who made this a very successful tournament weekend. On January 28th, I attended the release of Brock University's new strategic plan, 2025 to 2030, Transforming People: Reimagining the Future, and presented Brock President and Vice Chancellor Leslie Riggs with a certificate commemorating the university's 60th anniversary. On January 30th, I attended the USAF Hajamad Department of Engineering Open House at Brock University. The event provided an opportunity for students, faculty, and staff to connect with community supporters and showcase the department's growth since welcoming its first cohort in September. On January 30th, Niagara Region hosted the Niagara Biennial Design Awards, a biannual awards program that celebrates design excellence in Niagara. This event took place at Club Roma under the category Landscape Architecture. The project, the First Nations Peace Monument located in the DQ House Heritage Park, was the outstanding achievement winner. The project owner is the city of Thorold and the project team was the Friends Alora Secord, Douglas J. Cardinal Architect Incorporated, Cortec Group, Plenty Canada, and Landscape of Nations 360, the Niagara Parks Commission, Niagara Region, and Rankin Construction Incorporated. Thank you Friends Alora Secord President Carolyn McCormick and your team for working closely with our Director of Public Works and Community Services Jeff Holman and his team to make this vision and project a reality. Our new park signs at the Battle of Beaver Dam's Park and Merritt Meadows also received honorable mention. And this is the award for the Award of Excellent Landscape Architecture, First Nations Peace Monument. And we also won a frame certificate that went with this that will proudly go on display at our Department of Operations, our Municipal Operations Center. So I'll leave this here so no one can see my face, they can see that. Each February, people across Canada participate in Black History Month, events and celebrations that honor the legacy and contributions of Black people in Canada and their communities. The 2025 theme for Black History Month is Black Legacy and Leadership, celebrating Canadian history and uplifting future generations. A Niagara Transit Public Information Session will be held at the 50-plus center, formerly the Thorold Senior Center, this Friday, February 7th, from 9:30 to 11:30 AM. Come out to their information booth to learn what they're doing to improve transit in Niagara, share your ideas and feedback. You can also complete the online survey regarding the Niagara Transit Service and Facilities Master Plan, and you can go to the website, nrtransit.ca. That's all one, nrtransit.ca. The DSPN, the District School Board of Niagara, received ministry approval on three new elementary schools which will address accommodation pressures in Thorold and Welland, the two fastest-growing cities in the Niagara Region. Slated to open in September 2027, two of these schools will service the city of Thorold. They are the Welland-Thorold Elementary School, which will be a project that is $33.1 million. It accommodates 726 pupil spaces and 49 licensed childcare spaces, and it'll be located on the corner of Niagara Street and Merritt Road, and I believe that's going to be on the old fairgrounds property. And the Thorold East Elementary School, which will come in at $33.5 million, 726 pupil spaces, 49 licensed childcare spaces, to be located in Rolling Meadows, Niagara. This is a great announcement for the city of Thorold and Welland. And in closing, some Family Day events. On Family Day, Monday, February 17th, there will be free public skating from 10:30 AM till 12:00 noon at the Frank Doherty Arena on Front Street. Please check the city website for more information. That's from 10:30 AM to 12:00 noon. And the Darlene Ryan Port Robinson Community Center will be hosting their 7th Annual Pasta Fundraiser Dinner on Monday, February 17th as well. There are two seedings, 5:00 to 6:00 PM and 6:30 to 7:30 PM, as well as takeout from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. Tickets are $15 for adults and $8 for children 3 to 12. Call Marty to reserve at 905-384-9513. That's call Marty to reserve at 905-384-9513. You can visit their Facebook page for more information and all the details regarding this. And that's the end of my mayor's remarks. And now, I'd like to welcome Regional Counselor Tim Whalen for his presentation respecting the 2025 regional budget. Welcome, Counselor Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor Yugleni. Good evening. Good evening, city councillors and people of Thorold. It's good to be here once again this evening, but this time not a pleasure to report the 2025 regional budget. I'm sure you've had a chance to look at your presentation that I gave you in your package this evening, but the full agenda ahead of you tonight, I don't want to complicate things too bad, so I'll sidestep a few of the items like bylaws and budgets and regional services, but you can take a look at them in your agenda package. If you speed along and go to page 21, you can appreciate that we're pressured was equivalent to what you have here at the city when you get into your 2025 budget here this week, with inflation and mandated services. The region is no different than the city, delivering affordable and efficiently responsible core services. If we turn to page 23? Yes, please. So if we get to, we'll just plug along here until we eventually get there.
Yeah. I think she's just, it's coming. Okay.
It's page 23 of the city's numbering as opposed to, so if we go down where it says the 9.6%, if you don't mind. It's page 23 of the council's agenda package, not in my presentation. You know, we'll just plug along if that's the case. So if we turn to page 23, the sad impact of this budget relates to a general levy increase of 9.6%. This percentage is hard to digest with our everyday living, and everything we need to do just keeps going up. Yes, we have inflation under control, but it doesn't mean that cost of everything is going down. It just means the impact on inflation is not as crazy level as it was. This 9.86% equates to an average of $191 increase on the average Niagara home. The next page shows just what adds up to this increase. Page 25 shows a budget breakdown. You'll notice that the agencies, boards, and commissions add up to $214,800 million. Including this is $212.456 of policing. This is an increase of $24 million or 4.9%, and this is of this 9.6%. In their defense, over $12 million has been affected and mandated by the provinces. These services were once covered by the province, but now are downloaded to the region. The OPP receives $77 million of these services, and we asked the province to help us here also. It'd be great to get on the same page as them and be treated as equal. The police budget is extreme, but includes an additional 64 new FTE with the majority of constables on the street. To go along with this, there'll be eight new positions that specialize in domestic complaints. The remainder area of covering in Niagara is a conservation area with an increase of .7 million or 1.4%. Cart services state status quo, and Niagara Regional Housing is .1 million, an increase of .02%. Page 26 relates to transit, an increase of 5.9% or an increase of $58 increase on the average household tax base. An area of a plus for change is a budget of .0% decrease of minus $5 to an increase of $2 for waste management on the average regional tax portion. We look at page 30. This shows an increase of 12.27% to address inflation and increase costs for equipment and materials to keep drinking water safe. This mandated on us and includes a 7.22% or $11.2 million for renewal needs. This year budget includes investing in core services such as two long-term care facilities, as well as 21 new FTEs in life stability. The capital budget funds of long-term assets like roads, equipments, and facilities are essential to providing services. Investing $376.1 million to regional assets with a 70% dedicated to renewing existing infrastructure across the region. Incremental investments being made to enhance affordable and supportive housing options. Highlights of the capital budget include $100 million for infrastructure upgrades to support major industrial investments, $29 million for capacity improvements of the Montrose Road, Lions Creek to Chippewa Creek area in Niagara Falls. This is to compensate around the hospital area, and $13 million for the region-wide annual road resourcing. $10 million for rehabilitation to JR Stark Bridge in West St. Catharines. With all this in mind, 92% of this budget is mandated by upper levels of government is pushed down to the region. And looking at this, what can you cut? There's no way that we can get rid of policing, ambulance, long-term care, or help with the mentally stable. The upper levels of government overrun their budgets, and since we don't have the same capabilities, the taxpayer takes a brunt of this increase. To finish it up, I'd like it to be known that this budget passed 19 to 10 at the regional level, and Mayor Yugleni and myself voted against it. People are having hard times in thriving, and budgets like this do not make it any easier. The budget for 2026 cannot carry on this fashion with back-to-back increases, and that's to get real and be more affordable. I sympathize with this council as you work through your 2025 budget deliberations, as times are not easy, and there are many influences that add to pressures to try to keep the increases down to a minimum. Thank you for listening to me, and if you have any questions.
Before I open the floor for questions, I just want to state, as council asked, the next two meetings, the next meeting we have the Niagara Regional Police presenting, and then the meeting after that we have Niagara Transit presenting, or is it the other way? But over the next two meetings, we will have two presentations on what council asked, you know, for them to come to counsel. Okay, so I'll start with Counselor DeAngel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make reference to page five of the presentation. I'll sort of run through my questions page by page. So page five, it talks about sustainability and affordability. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the regional council, if you can answer this, how could regional council think 9.6% increase is affordable?
I agree with you 100%, Counselor DeAngel. That's why the mayor and myself voted against it. It's not sustainable. We have to get real and make it easier for people to live.
Okay, but it passed at council, so what were the councillors thinking at 9.6 being affordable?
Well, like I said in my presentation though, what do you cut out? There are parts of this budget that are really in need, and it was a time where things happened at the provincial and federal level, now they're working their way down to the regional level. So you are right, it's not easy, definitely not.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Mayor, how much did spending go up in just the general levy? Because on page 11, it talks about $4 million in efficiencies identified, so they would have spent the $4 million plus additional money. Do you know how much that was?
Maybe you can help me. I think it was 46, was it not, 46 million? I'll give you the exact figures, Counselor DeAngel, I believe it's somewhere in that area. You got to keep in mind that 4.3 million is 1% in the levy.
Okay. What's in the contingency reserve at this point in time?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, what's in the contingency reserve at this point in time?
Just under a billion dollars. There's a lot there, definitely.
Holy cow. Billion dollars in reserves, but yet we can raise 9.6. Let's go to number, page 13. Now, I'm looking at the general tax levy breakdown. So they have departmental is 2.51, so that's the region. Then you have the agency boards, it's page 13, 5.13. Required to accommodate critical investments, 2.5, that's been underfunded. There's been a tax deferral of 2022 is .41. Bill 23 and Bill 185, I'm not exactly sure what those are, but they're actually giving 1.55% back. I don't see, and I could keep going down the list here, but I don't see, what is the growth and how does the growth factor into the 9.6%?
The growth in the region, is that what you're speaking of?
1.5%.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just, is that included in the 9.6, or are you adding another one point? You said 1.65?
1.5 growth figure for growth across Niagara, which is significantly less than the growth in our city, has already been accommodated in that number.
So not as separate growth, it would have been higher.
Yeah, so it would have been 11.1% increase instead of, or increase in spending as opposed to 9.6.
That's correct.
Okay. So affordability's not 9.6, but 11.1.
Yeah, depends on which way you look at it. You are right.
Well, I don't want to get too much of a debate here because I think this is atrocious. The Niagara Transit, can you explain how, page slide 15, how you can get, it says minus $8 to $58 on an average tax bill? How do you get minus 8?
It depends on the services per municipality.
Okay. So I'm going to, I have some questions regarding Niagara Regional Transit, but it's good to hear that they're coming here because we can ask them those questions. Because one of the biggest ones, and I don't know if you can answer this, Counselor, is the pot of money that, or the amount that the city of Thorold pays for transit, is that, okay, best way of describing this, we have a hospital fund that we pay, and every year it goes, the assessment actually goes down because as we increase assessment, there's more people putting into it. Is that very similar to what's happening in transit?
I don't believe so. Maybe, I think, sorry, Mr. Yugleni, Mayor Yudon, Counselor Longo can answer that, or would you mind?
My understanding, and Maria, can you, or Counselor Longo, I think it's taken into account that how many people are paying in in your municipality. Do you want to elaborate on that, Counselor Longo?
I'll do my best, Mr. Mayor. It's pretty complicated. I spent over an hour and a half on the phone with Transit after our budget meeting, and again, I'm glad they're coming to explain it, but my understanding is our growth basically has us spend more, not less like you may think. So because we're growing, we actually, our percentage went higher than other municipalities with less growth.
Okay, so if.
And our service remains exactly the same year after year.
Yeah, to me, that's a big concern because we have more demand for transit, we pay more, and our service isn't going up, but we're paying more. We should actually be paying less because we have growth. So growth is not really helping us in Thorold, it's actually hindering us because it's making us pay more. So that, I'll leave that, because I have more and more questions on that, but I'll leave that for the presentation when they come. They'll have to explain that. My other question is, is what's the average home in Niagara? Like, it's easy to throw $178 to $251, but again, what's an average home in Niagara? Because most people, through you, Mr. Mayor, or through the council, can someone answer that? What's the average home?
You have to take into consideration, Counselor DeAngel, it was the, I think, 2016 NPAC assessment, which is not current.
I know, but what is it?
I believe this was geared at, Yugleni, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was what, 268, I believe?
What do we use for that number, Maria?
For Thorold, I believe it's 268.
I'd like to know many homes in Thorold are 268,000.
It doesn't, that's not relevant, because.
Well, it is relevant, Mr. Mayor. I can debate you on this, because if your house is assessed more than 268, which most houses are, you're paying way over the $251.
But that's from eight years ago, so what happens is, that was the average at that time. Now, if the average goes up when they do the new assessment, doesn't mean that your taxes are going up, because it gets bumped accordingly, and if your house went up with the same as the average in that tax, in that increase, then your taxes will stay the same. So it's based on eight years ago figure. That was the average eight years ago, okay?
Yes. My point is, eight years ago, regardless of what the average assessment is, most houses in Thorold are above the average assessment. So when you're representing this to the citizens of Thorold, a $251 increase is not an accurate number. I've always argued that you should put what a house is going for right now, to buy a new house in Thorold would be more indicative of what a tax rate bill is. Because I hear complaints, as I move to Thorold and I don't realize our taxes are so high. Well, if they understood and it was made aware to them and it's transparent, like this is not transparent. You don't even have it on the slide here. You don't even have what the Thorold average is. And Thorold house prices, try to go buy one, are higher than some of the other areas in Niagara. So the other areas in Niagara are bringing the average down, but the Thorold taxpayers are getting hit a lot harder. And if your assessment is above the average in terms of increase, because houses, there's different prices based on the selling, and when they reconfigure the NPAC numbers, you can be hit with about a 20% tax increase for a house in Thorold, very easily. So that's my point, is to me, this is irrelevant information. It should be more accurate in terms of describing what you want to put on the sheet.
Well, that's the NPAC of eight years ago that the government's using, that we all use in municipalities, just so you know. And Maria, just give you the number of what it is involved.
I fully understand that, Mr. Mayor. I fully understand that. I'm just saying it's not a real.
Understand that that's what's used.
It's not a realistic amount that we're being taxing here in the city.
It's realistic for the numbers they're using to do the calculations, okay? We're not using today's numbers, Counselor DeAngel.
That's not the point I'm making, Mr. Mayor. I think you don't quite understand what I'm trying to drive across. Well, you do, that we're being taxed heavily in Thorold based with this 9.6%. Look at your tax bill and you'll see when it comes in next spring how much you're getting. My bill, I just did some calculation, I'm 48% is regional tax bill. So I anticipate a $500 or $600 increase, because my house is a little, it's 25 years old, but it's way assessed, it will be assessed more than what that is eight years ago. Even eight years ago, it's being assessed higher, so that's.
That's the average eight years ago. It doesn't mean it's your house, it's the average, okay?
My house is 25 years old and other houses in Thorold are newer, so they're going to be highly taxed than mine. That's the point I'm making here, that most houses in Thorold are going to be taxed a lot higher than the $251. Just moving along to item number, page 20, I know you mentioned the police budget went up quite substantially, but they've hired 64 new officers. Again, I'm not going to ask a lot of questions because we have the chief and their representatives coming to the next council meeting and the following one. But my question to that is, are we going to see more, you mentioned through you, Mr. Mayor, that we're going to see more officers on the ground. Are they going to be specifically for traffic enforcement? Because sitting on the Road Safety Committee, we're constantly putting up new stop signs and traffic calming measures that are costing the city quite a bit of money. One of the behaviors that we have to change is individuals getting ticketed for driving poorly, driving through stop signs, driving through red lights, they need to be, starting to be ticketed more. Is that something we're going to see in Thorold? More police presence on the traffic safety? Through you, Mr. Mayor.
I would hope, but I would say that that's something you can ask when they, when they do their presentation on how that's going to be distributed across Niagara.
But that wasn't asked at regional council?
Well, at the time, that, their program, yes, it is asked, but their program, they will put it together, and their goal is to make communities safer, absolutely. That's why they asked for this.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, it was 64 new FTE, it's not all constables on the street. There are specialized services to go along with that also. That's a good question for Chief Fordy when he gets here, though.
Okay. On the capital side, on the very last, or close to the end, page 20, I guess, last page 24, there's nothing on there really for Thorold capital budget highlights. Is there anything that Thorold's going to be receiving through the capital budget in 2024 from the region?
There is projects that are part of previous years that are still involved, and one of the biggest ones is, and you can drive by and see, is the DQ Water Treatment Plant. It's a major, major expenditure going there, and that plant feeds the majority of the city of Thorold.
Mr. Mayor, to go along with that, is the major water. Mr. Mayor, to go along with that, is the major water treatment plant-
As well, there's pre-work being done on the South Niagara wastewater treatment plant, which everything on the east side of the canal will be diverted to that new plant when it's built, so that means all of Thorold South, Allenburg and Port Robinson East, everything on that side will be, be going to that.
Mr. Mayor, that was a third of a billion dollar project, so it's big.
Okay, but to answer my question, it's not in the 2024 budget, that was a previous budget that they're working through? Or is that in addition in the 2024 budget?
While there is money in that budget for the South Niagara wastewater treatment plant, and there's some other roadwork, resurfacings and different things.
Well, it'd be nice-
Regional roads.
If it's a Thorold presentation, maybe, Mr. Mayor, maybe we could see that, send that through either Regional Council, send that information. So if someone asks me, what are we getting from the region in terms of capital works, it'd be nice if that could be answered. Right now, I'd have to say nothing because it was on this as the capital budget highlight.
Councillor Whalen will follow up on that.
I appreciate that. Okay, I'll, I'll leave, I have more questions, but I'll save them for the appropriate parties. Again, I know it's not a question, but I'm very disappointed in where it's come, I, I don't think this is a good time for the citizens to be taking a 9.6 plus a 1.5 growth for over 11.1% spending on the region, it's not a good time for citizens here in Thorold.
Mr. Mayor, we are 100% agreeable, that's why we voted against the budget.
Who's up next, councillor Doros?
Yeah, three, Mr. Mayor, thanks councillor Whalen for showing up. Just, I thank you and the mayor for voting against this, because I, I'm appalled, and I keep getting comments from residents, they're just sick about this. You know, 2023, it was 7.58, 2024, 7, 2025, 9.96, so in the last three years, 24.54% increase, it's not your fault, not the mayor's fault, but it's, it's, it's very troubling. I think they waste money at the region, I hear about it all the time from people that work there. You know, do we need a DEI department when we have human resources and Ontario Human Rights Commissions? Quarter of a million dollars wasted. Now, we passed something recently, and I don't know if you'd be interested in trying to put this motion forward at the region, but I'll read you the motion that was passed this past year from our council, that the city of, well, it would be that the regions' agencies, boards and commissions, ABC, be provided with an annual budget guidance equal to the rate of inflation or 3%, whichever is lower. Do you think you can pass some, or put something forward like that? Because I, it's, it's got to stop somewhere. We're venting with you because you're here, but it, it's just, it's, it's, it's hard to digest what's going on at the region, and it's not your fault, or the mayor's, but, you know, we have to, we're sticking up for our residents, right? This is our home turf. You know, my house burned down 10 years ago, great, I got a new house and my taxes are going to go up over a thousand bucks. So I'm not happy about this, and a lot of people, and a lot of people can't afford it, and it's very troubling.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I respond to that?
I'm sorry councillor Whalen.
It's something to look at, we're going to start budget deliberations very soon, we're not going to wait till the fall or the summer like we did last time.
But are you, are you willing to pass a, a motion like that?
I'll work with it on this.
Or to try to?
The rate of inflation does make more sense, definitely, and that's close to it, yes.
100%.
We'll work with that, and we'll see what we can do, and we'll get back to you.
Just to have a guideline, and, and these departments, they, they, and I, I don't understand how you guys, and I understand the police are very powerful, but there's a point where you're going to have to say no, right? And I know you've been downloaded from the province, and that's part of the issue.
Well, I will say in defense of the police budget, 5.7% of that increase was for community policing initiatives downloaded from the province with no money attached.
I understand.
So in fairness to the policing-
Yep.
I think people need to understand.
Yeah, no, I was aware of that, yes.
And they didn't get the 1.5% growth used against their budget, which I argued for, because I do believe that any department in the region needs to be assessed that growth, it's policing, because we need to service the growth. But anyway, that's on, that's just something that I-
Quick question, okay, so I think they've caught 48,000 people speeding with the new speed enforcement radar. Where's that money going? Does that go right back to the region?
We're not, first of all councillor Doros, we don't hope to make anything off it, if we didn't make anything, but we controlled speed, that's all we're asking for.
But that money is going for complete, community safety initiatives, just so you know.
But does it stay within the region?
Yes.
Okay.
And to go along with that councillor Doros, Call Your Road will be in effect in May to August this year?
Yeah, it's to run the program, eventually have more cameras, but also to, it goes to community safety initiatives.
Okay, thank you, and after communicating with you previously, I know, I thought our, our debt was about a half a billion, but it's only 335 billion, but I'm sure there's some hidden costs in there. Just a last question councillor Whalen, I know all these changes are going through with the planning department, and you've mentioned to me in, in some communication we had, that seven municipalities are on board. Do you advise Thorold to get into, to get on this, is there any advantages? And I just, like, they're dissolving, are they dissolving the planning department at the region?
No, it won't be dissolved, there's seven planners there, something that you might want to look into, I, I'm sure your planner department's already looked into this, but if they could leave that with you, I know they have unlimited services, might be able to help you out when you're in the pinch right now.
But what's their role going to be?
So the planning department will be in charge of a growth projection, growth planning, so that will be moved to public works, and the reason that is, is because you have to make sure you service growth with pipes in the ground, sewer, water, so those projections have to be relatively accurate to make sure that the growth can take place. So that growth planning is going to public works, they're going to be doing some consulting work, but the rest of that stuff is going to be moved to the local municipality.
Okay, and, and just in closing, I, I think you, you have to bring forward, they're hiring too many people, more than they need, in my opinion, they're tripping over each other, I talked to people that work there, and they tell me stories that I wouldn't even repeat, but it's so frustrating, and I just feel bad for taxpayers that have to make a choice between taking a vacation or buying something for their kids where they have to pay their property taxes. And, and I'm really concerned about how many are going to go in arrears, but, but anyway, pass our, our message to the rest of the region, because I, I'm not happy, and either residents, but thank you for coming councillor Whalen, I appreciate it.
Thank you councillor Doros.
Councillor Sinnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, thanks for coming councillor Whalen, it's not a tough, not an easy job, you got to figure out how to balance services and projects and the province downloading on, on us as well, so I appreciate the job you guys try and do. It is a big number, there's no, no way around it, nobody likes this number, but I appreciate that you try and keep it down. My question to you would be, one of my problems is transit. We have all this growth, but we get no more transit unless we want to pay for it, so that 35 million that came through recently that they announced, does that, will that help to make routes, or help cities to get more transit in there? Where does that 35 million go to?
Yeah, I could be wrong, I believe that's capital funding, sort of go to buses and things like that, so, and councillor Longo can probably exemplify, expand on that, like, I don't, I don't, it's probably relatively new councillor Longo, do you have any attention?
Yeah, it's relatively new, we have a meeting next week to discuss it in detail, I really can't.
So hopefully we'll-
I could be guessing at this point.
Yeah, and we'll have answers when the transit comes here.
I, I agree, it's new, I just read it, I just, if I can throw anything in, get some route, get some routes out of it for, for the city, so, thank you.
We definitely aren't underutilized, so it'd be nice to have you, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead councillor Deivitas.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I had a lot of citizens and small business owners come up to me, I have a comment first, and then I'll ask a question. My comment is, when with the relentless cycle of excessive taxation, the region's decision to impose a staggering, almost 10% tax hike is not just irresponsible, it's a direct assault on hardworking families and small businesses in Thorold. Instead of demonstrating fiscal discipline, the region has once again chosen the easy route, reaching deeper into our pockets of taxpayers who are already struggling to keep up with inflation and rising costs. What's also frustrating to me, instead of looking inward, identifying areas of wasteful spending, the region continues to pass the burden upon taxpayers. Where's the accountability?
100% correct, councillor.
My question is, give me time on this. The region is eyeing a possible property tax hike of only 2% this year, fearing taxpayers simply can't afford to keep paying taxes, which will outpace the growth of household incomes for a number of years. Does this sound familiar? It's happening right now. But meeting that goal will mean the city departments will have to actually chop about nearly 8 million in spending. The departments will collectively have to decrease spending by nearly 3% as the budget stands right now. My question is, the, the region did this before in hard times, why aren't they decreasing spending now?
Can I get the direct question if you don't, like councillor?
Well, you decreased spending before in hard times, and this is a hard time, why aren't they decreasing spending now?
Why aren't they?
And you did it before.
Yeah, definitely has to, something has to be done going, it's already past the 2025, but going forward, we definitely have to get things in line.
I have another question, what have you suggested to the region about ways to decrease spending?
Well, I don't micromanage, we, we let the staff do-
Have you suggested anything?
Oh yeah, we all suggested, I spent over 60 hours with, with budget, and the mayor did the same thing, equivalent, up there hour wise. So we have input on it, but we, we get direction from staff, and we go from there. And hopefully next, next term, the year 2026, we really put the hammer on it and get reasonable again.
People can't afford this constant tax increase, people are drowning, and we're throwing weight in them, and they're going to drown even faster.
Thank you councillor Deivitas, is there any further questions for councillor Whalen? Go ahead councillor Longo. Well, I didn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'll get you next councillor Decker, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to councillor Whalen, it's a tough job, I know, I'm not going to pick it apart, I, I wouldn't want to have to make the decisions, but, you know, I, I just want to make a comment, the region passes these tough, tough budgets, they come in at 9.6%, and then I get an email before the ink's even dry from the region, stating that they're opening a new department of post-secondary student housing strategy. Like, those are the things you need to look at, like, you're trying to save money and then you just keep, not you, but the region just keeps piling on. Like, what is this going to accomplish? Really, it, and again, that's my question, what's it going to accomplish? Don't answer, because we don't know, but it's just, it's got to stop somewhere, they got, it's a make-work project over there.
I hope you've seen my com-
They need to pump the brakes on these things.
I hope you've seen my comments in the paper on that.
I, I didn't, sorry, but-
If you do get a chance, please.
Just ridiculous, like, like, figure out ways to stop spending money, not continually spending more.
100% right councillor Longo, it, it has to be looked at, is it a want or a need as opposed to just a whim? Thank you.
Councillor Decker.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you councillor Whalen for your presentation. I'm not going to go into the, you know, 9.6%, I think everyone feels the same, that it's, you know, extremely high. I guess my question is, I saw that a new homeless shelter would be opening in Niagara, whereabouts is that occurring? And it would have been nice to see more shelters available in Niagara for, you know, the issues of homelessness that we're having. So whereabouts is this shelter being built, or is it, is it an existing shelter, or?
There's one that's already operating in Riordan Street, St Catherine's, there's one in Welland, it's almost there, and-
The one that-
That's the one I think you're speaking of, yeah, so it's in Welland.
Okay, so that, I mean, that's good to see that happening. I was a little disappointed that there wasn't a lot of new affordable housing, no money going towards new, like, affordable housing in this budget, and the two long-term facilities, it says two new long-term care facilities, but are they referring to the one in Fort Erie that was just built? The old one's closing, so they built the new one, and are you refer, are they referring to Lynnhaven?
Yes, Lynnhaven will be done next summer, I believe, and Gilmore Lodge is up, up in operation now.
Yes, those are the two.
That, that was just my comments, there's no use repeating what everybody else said, but it would, it would have been nice to see more money go towards, you know, some more shelters and affordable housing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you councillor Decker, go ahead councillor O'Hair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, I'm not sure if this is going to be answered by councillor Whalen, or come back to you, Mr. Mayor, but thank you for coming in councillor Whalen, and providing us with your presentation. My concern is, as I've heard tonight, and had heard earlier as well, is the offloading of planning to our municipality, from the region to our municipality. And I'm a little concerned, our planning department struggles as it is, many planning departments throughout the province struggle, there's just such a dire shortage of planners. And now, I'm worried again that our planners will be subject to even more work in, that they'll be faced with, without any assistance, and I'm just wondering, has something been worked into the region's plan where the City of Thorold may be able to address their shortages and their needs through the use of their consultants or a financial assistance in order to cover the cost of having to go out and search out additional planning support outside of the municipality? So that's a bit of a concern for me, and I'm wondering if that would be an answer you might be able to provide councillor Whalen, or Mr. Mayor.
Okay, but Mr. Mayor, do you want to add a lot?
That's a, something that's in a transitional, it doesn't take effect till April 1st, so there's a lot of stuff going on, and Jason would be able to say that's still in flux, am I correct Jason? And we'll have more wholesome news once we get closer to the, to the date.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but are they taking into account that there are immense shortages? I mean, simply providing us with a dollar figure to hire a planner is wonderful, but when there are no planners available, it doesn't help us, and then we have to go outside the municipality, which costs more than a planner, so are they taking these factors into consideration?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, so it is actually the province of Ontario that is, or changed the legislation, is forcing the region to download these services onto local municipalities, is not the region's choice. The region has offered some assistance, however, the region is going to be acting, if the region is going to be helping the local municipalities, they'll be acting as a consultant and be charging consulting fees to the local municipalities, it's not a free service. So we have, we have been having meetings, we have another one scheduled for tomorrow morning, to discuss this, how we're going to transition, I don't really have a lot of details because we're still in the works, just trying to figure out how we're going to adapt to this.
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, so has the Ontario government stepped up to say that they'll be assisting this, or is that off the table?
No, they haven't.
Good luck, yeah. Great, great, so, so they're going to make something that's already difficult, much more challenging?
It's, the idea is that it will be more seamless as far as permitting, because you only go to one place, so, will it, or will it not be, I can't answer that, but I'm giving you the reasoning why.
Okay, let's, let's bring this up again in another year.
You'll get more information on that. Councillor Longo, did you want to comment on that? Are you done councillor O'Hair? Yeah.
Just a point of order, Mr. Mayor.
We got it.
Councillor Hanley's not here, should we suspend the meeting for a while?
We're just going to pause.
Just pause for another 81%?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what the clerk just informed me, we're going to pause and take a break because the live streaming shut down, and it's rebooting, okay? So there is a break in the action until we come back. Okay?
Counsel Hanley, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Are we good?
Can you see us, Counsel Hanley?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Counsel Hanley.
I just can't see you, but I can watch it on YouTube.
I can see you.
Why is it raining?
I can see you.
I can't see counsel. I just have a thing that says City of Thorold where the ships climbed a mountain.
We can also see that it's raining behind you, Counselor.
We'll change that.
Behind you, behind you, from your door.
We're going to, we're going to proceed on the basis that you can hear us, Counselor. There's a video issue, but we can continue based on audio.
Oh, yeah, I was, I actually had, I was actually going to say that because I went on YouTube and I can get the YouTube feed. I can watch it from, on YouTube.
Okay.
Okay. Are we all set over there? Let me know. We're good?
I'm watching YouTube.
I'd like to reconvene this meeting at seven thirty-two PM, and we did leave for a while because we had to reboot our system. It went down, and we are now back. And we're just finishing up. Are there any further questions for Counsel Wayland before we move on? Seeing none. Counsel Wayland, thank you for your presentation. And any other information you get, would you please send it through to the clerk and we'll get it disseminated to council. As well, as I mentioned earlier, we will have the Niagara Regional Police Service and the Niagara Transit Commission coming, presenting to council over the next two meetings.
Mr. Mayor, it's perfect timing with both those agencies coming.
Yeah, and so now, I'm going to move on because you stay where you are because we're going to have a short presentation from you regarding the Thorold Sports Runway of Recognition. And Counsel Wayland, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As chairman of the Sports Thorold Runway of Recognition, just wanted to bring you up to speed. We had a new meeting last night. Just wanted to make a notation that Counsel Decer is back for another term. And we got a newbie this year. We have Counsel Sentence, which we look forward to have both the counselors on board. So, thank you. And just to let everybody know, our gala dinner this year will take place on June the sixteenth. It'll be back at Amity's this year, so we're looking forward to having it back there. We're hoping to probably about forty-dollar range that'll cover your dinner and the night's gala. So, being that said, we're looking for nominations for the runway. May the first is the deadline. If you go on the Runway of Recognition Thorold site, there are applications there. So, the more people that nominate, the more interesting it'll be. To go along with that, the White Family Foundation Scholarship, the forty thousand dollar scholarship is available now. So, we're hoping to get a lot of applications this year. If you go on the White Family Foundation Thorold's website, the application is there for, so as soon as you're accepted into college or university, get your application. It's going to be great to have a ton of applications this year. It's hard to believe that, I think the most we had was fourteen in any year. For forty thousand dollars, you'd think it'd be knocking down our doors, but it hasn't been so yet. So, the more applications in both these areas would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Counsel. Is there any questions? Go ahead, Counsel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Wayland, what's the cutoff date for the white?
They're both May the first, Counselor. Both May the first?
Thank you.
That's for all nominations?
Yes, for nominations for the runway as well as the White Family Scholarship.
Can we put that on the city website?
Yes, we can. If you can forward that, we'll make a posting and get that information out to the community.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks so much, Counsel Wayland, and we look forward to seeing you at future council. There are no delegation, I mean, there are, yeah, there are no delegations. Items for consent, we have items eleven point one through eleven point six. Does anyone want to pull any items? Okay, can I get a mover and a seconder for that? I got Counsel Sentence and Counsel DeAngelo. For, and we're going to do eleven one through eleven six. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. There are no items for consideration. I have a list here of some notices of motion, so I'll start with Counsel Dedevedis. Go ahead, and that'll be, you'll be bringing these notice of motion will come forward at the next meeting. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to provide a notice that I will be bringing a motion regarding security at alcohol events. We have become a lawsuit environment.
You can speak on it at the next...
I was just going to say a couple of lines.
Just quickly.
We've become a lawsuit environment and must ensure that taxpayers are never left vulnerable when alcohol is involved. This is about protection, taxpayers that never taken financial risks to inadequate oversight.
Thank you. So, you'll bring that at the next meeting. Counsel DeRose, I've been advised that you have two notices. Go ahead, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just first notice of motion I wanted to put forth is about protests within our city limits. And the second notice of motion is about mental health addiction and homelessness that I'd like to discuss at one of the following meetings. Thank you.
So, you'll work with the clerk on those?
Correct. Yes, thank you.
I got Counsel Sentence with two. Please go ahead, Counsel Sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first one is a notice of motion. Been expressed on re-establishing the Youth Advisory Liaison Committee, and I will be asking for a staff report concerning that matter. The second one is a notice of motion regarding the Bolton-Crompton projects, and I'll talk about that then.
Thank you so much. You work with the clerk as well. Counsel Hanley, go ahead. Go ahead. We can't hear you, Counsel Hanley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put a notice motion forward also in regards to an amendment in agricultural zones.
Amendment in agricultural zone, you'll work with the clerk on that one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. That's it? Okay. I have a motion from the last meeting, and I'll call on Counsel Sentence for his motion. Is there a seconder, Counsel Sentence? I've got Counsel O'Hair. Go ahead.
I got it up now. My motion is about a report to come back for about civic recognition, and it reads, whereas the city of Thorold values the contributions of its citizens and recognizes the importance of celebrating their achievements, whereas creating opportunities for civic engagement and appreciation fosters a stronger and more connected community, and whereas Thorold City Council wishes to explore options for formal citizen recognition to honor individuals who have made significant contributions to the well-being of the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the corporation of the city in Thorold enacts as follows: that staff be directed to review and report back to council with options for hosting a citizen recognition event to be held prior to the end of the council term in twenty twenty-six, and that the report include information respecting potential categories of recognition, potential locations of the event, suitable dates and times, estimated costs and budget implications, and the merits, the merits and considerations of holding the event as a formal gathering versus hosting it as part of a regular council meeting. Can I speak to it?
You sure can. Go ahead, Counsel.
So, this is something that we used to do, and it's something that I've asked a couple of times to get back. And I don't see it at the end of next year because it's an election year. I don't think you'd want people thinking or pandering to the citizens for that, but I see it early next... But I see it early next year or it by springtime is when I see this happening. And not everybody plays a sport and these people deserve recognition as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor O'Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I add a friendly amendment to this at this time or should I?
See what it is and we'll see.
So I'm wondering if we could also add to this Counselor Sentence, if staff could look at making suggestions for where there may be a designated presentation area within the city. So it's great to have these awards and celebrate them, but then we should remember them and they should become our history and heritage as well over the years.
So where, you mean like the runway of recognition somewhere where you would put these, is that what you're talking?
Exactly. So if an award has been given out on this particular date, then there's photos, there's a certificate, there's a place where they can be presented perpetually. So that we have them and that we remember in that year it was this person, in the following year it was this person, and so on and so forth.
Yeah.
So you're good with that?
I'm good with that.
So just a recommendation of where that could.
Well, that can be part of the report.
Right, right, but it didn't say that. That's why I'm adding.
No, no, I see where you're coming from.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
House wants to speak to that. Go ahead, Counselor D'Angelo.
Just, I'm not sure if it's in the motion. If we could see it again.
Yeah.
So I, I'll show it on the screen with Counselor O'Hare's friendly amendment. Just one second.
I know I was, I was part of the initial program when we started this, when I was mayor. And I would, it doesn't really say in there about a committee, and I know there was a committee in the past. Like, we're putting everything on staffs to do this, but there was a committee that was set up. And I think it'd be wise if there was a committee to work with staff for this report to come forward. Because I look at the faces here, not a lot of them were here at the time that this went on. So there, why reinvent the wheel? It was happening. There's people recognized. There was an event. It was held at the Thorold Community Activities Group and it was done annually. So I, I think we should go back into our history and dig that information up, how it was done, how it was presented, who was involved. And I don't think that should be just thrown upon staff to come forward and do that.
Okay, well, they can include that in. Are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that. We were just, like, between the clerk and the events committee, Jacob was gonna help out too, but past information would be great too. So, yeah, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, there'd be a bit of research. So I don't know if you want to include that as, as having a partial committee to set up to, to start getting that work done. As opposed to, as, because again, staff, staff has a lot of work on their plate. To add that to their plate sometimes, it just makes it more difficult.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there, there is a community events, community liaison group. So that's something that staff can, can turn to for insight, feedback.
Okay, and then anyone else that has input can obviously give that input as well. Okay? Go ahead, Counselor DeRose.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, a counsel sentence. Did you have a number in mind as to how many a year we would, we would process or?
No, I'm, I'm pretty open to this myself and I'd like to lean on the past to say, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do every, you know, do 10, 20 people at once. I would want to, like, if you're gonna do it yearly or every term, I would like to see, you know, a few, maybe half a dozen or, but we can come up with a number that.
And they can look at the frequency. I know that Counselor D'Angelo mentioned that it used to be on a year. I know when, since I've been, was involved, it was one per term. Actually, we had one booked, that was booked at the Belvedere Club that was supposed to happen and then COVID hit and then it never happened. So we were all set to go with one.
Yeah.
And then that got canceled and was never reinstituted, so.
So I would say if it's per term, it'd be a bigger number. If it's annually, then it would be a, a smaller number. But I don't have a number in mind.
Anyway, that can all come back as a consideration. Okay? Anyone else? Seeing none, we had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Counselor Hanley, I'll call on you for your statement by Counselor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, as the mayor does a mayor's report, I just wanted to do a counselor's report tonight. And mention some items that I've been addressing even though I may be absent from the City of Thorold. Recently, I've been addressing issues with residents from Thorold itself in regards to ticketing and snow removal concerns. I've been in correspondence with Jason Simpson's regards as such, and I appreciate that he was forthwith and gave me the answers I was looking for so that I could reach out to the residents. Also, I've been working on, as that, as counsel may be aware of, back in September, I brought a notice of motion forward in regards to encroachment on properties on Tulip T Drive. I've had some residents inquiring and I'd been forwarding information to the city and this week I'd gotten confirmation from Mr. Holman that that will be in fact coming forward at the February 25th council meeting. I've also was dealing with and helping the owner of J.C. Auto in Port Robinson. The Masons had inquired to me about how to go about acquiring a municipal significant event approval to hold an event in Port Robinson in regards to Masons' recognitions. Also, counsel may not be aware of, but since October, I've been working with the owner of Bobcat of Hamilton. And as of recently, just to report, they're looking to open up a new facility in Thorold. He was able to purchase the former Savern property on Beaver Dam's Road. And hopefully going to be opening up a new Bobcat of Hamilton dealership right here in Thorold. I've also been working closely with the owners of Meadowview Pet Resort in Thorold. Some counsel might be aware, we do have a pet resort here in Thorold. And I was recently brought to my attention that they've been in existence since 2007. But during our comprehensive zoning bylaw review in 2019, kennels were in fact excluded, ignored in all zones. In the City of Thorold, that's why I brought that up earlier tonight. And also, I've been working with the anonymous donor in regards to the food distribution that will take place tomorrow, coordinating the times and the people for whom they will meet at the designated residence. So just let that know, tomorrow we'll be delivering food to the seniors building existing on Front Street.